Good evening, welcome to the May ninth zoning board of appeals meeting town of Concord. This is a Zoom only meeting and therefore I will I will do a roll call of board members that are present. Thomas Swain.
Yes.
Elizabeth Leonard, Dwyer Leonard.
Here.
And Ravi Fia.
I'm here.
And Chair Steer Tannamans here as well further on from the other people from the town that are present is I thought Kim was on but she apparently isn't but we also have President Kristen Gagelis who is town council. So we have her here as well. Let's start off at the first hearing of tonight. And at seven o'clock and that's it. Russell Gamber for special permit on the zoning by law sections six to seven and eleven six. To construct a two-story addition which requires a waiver to the fifteen-foot height limit within the required fifteen-foot setback at seventy-nine Elsinore Street. Anybody here to speak on the application?
Yes, my name is Preston Picardi. I am the contractor for Russell.
Good.
So what we're proposing to do, it's an existing three-bedroom, two-bath residence. We want to add a sixteen-by-thirty-foot garage to the left side.
Do you have any visuals or?
Well, they were uploaded. Am I supposed to be?
You don't have, okay, there it is. There we are. We just thought, thank you. It's always, you know, a picture, you know.
Oh, yeah.
A thousand words, so.
All right, I thought you had that already. So, yeah, so that's the proposed addition on the left side. And we are just over the fifteen-foot barrier by fourteen-foot-three where the roof is.
Okay.
Fourteen-foot-three-and-a-half inches. So we're basically eight-and-a-half inches over. So we wanted to borrow that eight-and-a-half inches from the other side so they could build it.
Yeah. And so on the other side, you're also going to do an addition, right?
True, yep. It's a bit, we're coming out two extra feet. So instead of twelve by twenty-seven, it's gonna be fourteen by twenty-seven.
Okay.
And that's like a sunroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's it. Anybody? Anybody of the board, any questions here?
Yeah. Does the existing garage come down?
No, it does not. It's a very small, they came and got a car into it. It's more of like a shed.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. And no further questions from the board. Let me open it up to the public, members of the public. Is anybody from the public wanting to speak on this? Seeing nobody, then I will close the public comment section of this of this hearing. And bounce it back to the board, see whether there is any, anything that we wanna discuss, questions, motions.
Were any of the neighbors advised? I didn't see any letters in the file. In favor of or opposed.
Yeah, everyone was advised. They got that standard letter. But no one's, no one's, no one wrote letters in in support or negative about it either, so.
Okay, thank you.
And it seems like almost the same the same proposal we had, I think it's the last because I thought like, hey, this was, when I saw this, it was like, it was leftover from last, our last hearing, right?
Yeah, the one over in the Thoreau School neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was like, oh, this is leftover, but no, it's almost the exact same application, so.
So, you know, I think we have this, no reasonable alternatives, finding that we've gotta make. You know, to me, it seems like, you know, it's not reasonable to move the existing house, right? If you're gonna put a garage on it, that's either on that side or the other side. And this does not seem like couldn't overly wide garage. It's a standard kind of two-car, so.
Right.
You know, it seemed to me like that was, that satisfied the, that there isn't really a reasonable alternative to put to somewhere else on the lot here.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, 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 I agree.
And, you know, in terms of detriment to the neighborhood, it's, it's a matter of inches and, you know, we've seen no complaints and yeah, the massing looks perfectly acceptable to me.
Yep, no, I, I, I agree. So I could entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll move that the application for Russell Gamber for a special permit under zoning by law section six-two-seven-eleven-six of constructed two-story addition which requires a waiver to fifteen-foot height limit within the required fifteen-foot setback at seventy-nine Elsinore Streets. Be approved with standard conditions.
I second that motion.
All those in favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Ms. Dwyer Leonard.
Aye.
And chair vote aye as well. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Second item of the agenda continuation. An applicant being Irina Maldonova for a special permit on the zoning by law sections four-two-two-two and eleven-point-six for nine-hundred-ninety-nine square foot detached additional dwelling at two-sixty-two Virginia Road. Couple of items here. One housekeeping item. Mrs. Swain was not at the hearing, at the first hearing about this project, but he has reviewed the video that was done and has filed the applicable paperwork with with the town. So he is able, if, if he so decide, he was able to, is able to vote on this. And he's up also, as a result, up to speed on what's, what's playing here. So where we left it last time, we had the presentation of the project by the applicant. And we didn't, after that, we did not go into the details of the, of the application, but just got stuck on on the lot question where you know, we had, and this was six-point-two-point-four, the frontage exception. And we, I think, came to a conclusion, Elizabeth was the only one, Elizabeth Agaros More that is, was, seemed to be the only one who did not, who was undecided on the issue. But we, we were kinda clear that a dwelling could not be placed in that location. But just because we wanted to be on secure footing, we asked town council for their opinion and town council, I think, agreed with us. So I I don't know where we wanna go here as a board. But, you know, I, I think the application, you know, I, I read it as in, you know, that in that portion of the lot that dwelling unit can't, can't be situated. It, it will have to be further back in the lot where there's a hundred-and-fifty foot or more lot width. So I don't, don't know where, what the board's opinion is here. I, yeah. We can ask whether there is anybody wanting to speak. It's, it's a light fry tonight. So if anybody wants to speak on this, I'll be, I'll be happy. Mr. Wind. Mr. Wind?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had the, the power to unmute.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, yeah, we, we, go ahead.
I was waiting for you to deem me worthy to unmute.
Yeah.
Good evening. I represent the applicants here, Irina Maldonova and Michael Gresty for the ADU. And we did submit a memo this morning. I did not see it in the materials that are posted online, so maybe it just did not get into those materials. And I don't know if the board has had a chance to review it.
We, I, I didn't get it.
So, you know, it's, I see it there now online. But I, I do think it may not have been there, you know, earlier today when.
Correct, correct. I, I, I looked at, you know, around lunchtime, I was looking through everything and I, and I was, I did not.
Well, it was my fault for submitting it this morning as opposed to an earlier time. But I do wanna be heard on this because I was reviewing the application, reviewing the issues that the board had with the location of the ADU. And I wanna highlight one major point, and that is at section four-two-two-two G, it does provide requirements for what the ADU needs to comply with in order to be built. And it references setbacks as one of the primary restrictions, I guess, on where the ADU could be placed. But it doesn't say frontage. And I think that's a very important exclusion there because it could have said setbacks and frontages. But it just says setbacks. And furthermore, without really getting into the meat of the memorandum, I would like you to take a look at it. But to hold the ADU to the same, to the same standards of a primary dwelling, I don't believe that's that's in the best interest of Concord. And I don't think that was what was intended when the bylaw was enacted. Because to do that, to hold this lesser building to the same standards of a primary dwelling, I think, does a disservice to what is being ostensibly the desired goal here, which is more development, more ADUs. And so I would focus on that, that section four-two-two-two does not say frontages. There is no frontages referenced in that whole section, the ADU section. And I think that exclusion is, is worth paying attention to when we're talking the interpretation of the bylaws. And as another point, my understanding is that Ms. Maldonova, Mr. Gretzky could build an essentially equivalent structure as a barn or a garage there of the same size, the same magnitude, just not habitable, I suppose. But the same style of building just to be used as a garage or a barn or something else, not as a human, human habitation. And so I'd like the board to consider that and consider the, the points made in the memorandum when they're deciding this issue.
Yeah, I and again, sorry, we did not get this memo. I just pulled it up here and I actually don't necessarily wanna read it right now. Again, I, I, I think this I think this section that, that we keep on referencing about the frontage exception lot is pretty clear, right? It says no dwelling should be placed there, whether it's an additional dwelling, a second dwelling, a third dwelling, whatever it is. No dwelling shall be placed in that area of the lot that doesn't have a hundred-and-fifty-foot width. I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's where I get stuck. That's, you know, and that's, that's a hurdle that I think one needs to overcome first before one, you then can go to four-two-two-two. And you know, I, I, I'm, you know, maybe some other members of the, the board have, have a different opinion. And, you know, if, if, if it will do you a favor, we can always ask ask town, our town council to, to review your memo and just maybe to expand on what, what's written already. But, you know, I'm, I'm yeah, I, I just, you know, I'm just not convinced on what your argument that you're making here. And I, I, as from the beginning, I have not been convinced, not just your argument, but, you know, after I spent some time reviewing the application when it was, when it first came before us. You know, I spent quite a bit of time reviewing the application, going out to site, walking the, walking the sidewalks, thinking that everything was hunky-dory. And then, then indeed found this, this tiny note on your existing conditions plan that referenced this section. So I'm, I'm a bit surprised that, you know, once, since this was known by the applicant that he had a lot like that, that you couldn't have a dwelling in that section, that he didn't at that point in time ask for an opinion from you to see, you know, what does this mean for, for my application and for the plans that I have? So it's I, 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 I feel a bit strong here, but, you know, I'm only one of three votes on this board, so. And, you know, there's, there's three other members that, that, that can chime in. So seeing where, just seeing where they wanna go, whether they have anything to add to this.
No, I, I'm with you, Theo. You know, I appreciate that there's always gonna be a legal argument on both sides here. And, you know, we I did get a chance to just read through the memo quickly here and thank you for presenting the substance to us. You know, I, I, I'm in the same boat, you know, I don't, I don't think the failure to mention a particular bylaw requirement in four-two-two-two means that you don't have to require, comply with some other section of the bylaw. So I, I, I agree with where Town Council comes out on this. And I, I, I think that's fatal to the plan that's before us.
I, I agree with that.
So respectfully, I, I agree that perhaps kicking it back over to town council for a rebuttal to the memorandum may be in order. But I do think as, at least as far as there may be an ambiguity in the bylaws, that cuts to the landowner. And if there's an interpretation that is beneficial to the landowner, then that's the one that should be taken. However, I don't wanna get quagmired in interpretation arguments that may come down the road. But I'll leave it at that, that if, if that is the direction the board is leaning, I would suggest kicking it back over to town council for a rebuttal.
Barry, I'd, I'd like to add a few comments here, if I may. Thank you for presenting your memo. I think it was well-stated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanna kind of recap for the board that our, the guidance to build in this location came originally from Ms. Hughes. And we have posted the email exchange with Ms. Hughes up in the materials for the board where she clearly indicates that we're at liberty to build in the front of the lot, i.e. in the location that we chose. We then had the lot surveyed.
I, I, I'm actually gonna interrupt you here. Ms. Hughes is a town planner. She works for the town. She is not your attorney. She is not your zoning reviewer. She's not your planner. All of that is, is your responsibility. And, and I have to defend Ms. Hughes here because it is your responsibility and you as the applicant and the landowner should not be pawning this off. You, you had an existing conditions plan with a note on there that says that this is a lot reduction, a, a frontage reduction lot. You should have at that point in time inquired, what does this mean? What does this mean for what I can do? You did not get an opinion. If you had your opinion, either by zoning attorney, either by by a civil engineer or by your architect, review that, that single note. That is, that should have been your cue that something was amiss here. I, I spend a lot of time because I, this was also not, not brought forward quick urgently. I spend a lot of time reviewing the application. I went, as I said earlier, I went out to site, I walked the site, I reviewed everything. I spent a good Sunday afternoon just reviewing your application until I saw that note on the existing conditions plan. You know, it's, it's not a lot, it's lot, these lot frontage exceptional lots don't come, this is the first one I'm seeing since my time in the board. I initially thought this was a lot that was non-conforming, like we have thousands in, in Concord. And as a non-conforming lot, I actually thought you were short one of the special permits you, you needed to have. But then, you know, once I saw that note, you know, you, you find your special permits, except that, you know, you're the location of, of your unit is, is, is incorrect. And that being said, we also are not prohibiting you from building an ADU unit on your lot, right? That's still there. You can still build it, just you need to pull it back a bit, close to your house. And, you know, which, you know, that by itself might have advantages if, if the, the unit becomes, you know, an elderly parent, as you, you stated in your, in your application. And, you know, you might wanna have him or her closer to, to your house. So there's some advantages to that. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty clear here. And, and, and I, I really, as I said in the beginning, I object that you put the blame to misuse. It's just, it's your responsibility and yours alone.
So I, I hear you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the effort put forth and the time you spent on investigating and looking at the proposal. I do wanna say that we, you know, you said, do we have this reviewed by an attorney or civil engineer? We were very aware of the conditions because it was strange just when we bought the house that it was so far back from the road. So we investigated and the land surveyor's drawing, which is included in the submission, which I can bring up by Dylan Roy, Dylan St. Roy, I'm sorry, shows the existing conditions without showing that as a restriction. And we proceeded then to do a design which they were part of. They then completed the siding of the, of the building as well as the engineering for the septic tank system in the location that we proposed. And their, their own drawing shows the, the zoning district with the setbacks on the perimeter only. And it does not show that we can't build an ADU in the front of the lot. So they concur with us. So we have my attorney here. We have Ms. Hughes' original indication, which I understand is not something we can totally rely on, but certainly sets direction. And we have our civil engineers as well as the land surveyor all showing the same thing. So I think we have a lot of professionals who've looked at this and came up with an analysis and showed us the same thing that we thought. This was a place that a second ADU, not the primary dwelling could be built, as well as, as Mr. Wind said, any other structure.
Yeah, no, well, I, we happen to disagree on that, this point. And, you know, I, I, I rely on this one heavily on the town council. So, and I think they were pretty clear in there. But, you know, to, to be fair, we will, we will we will ask the town council to expand on their opinion and, and include comments that were made by, by your attorney's memo that, that we just got tonight.
Thank you. I, I wanna make one other comment in reference to your suggestion that we could build behind the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot line where the house is currently. There's not a lot of land there, but, you know, by comparison with other smaller plots, there's quite a bit of land. It's right near the wetland and right near the neighbors. So the, the bandies who are immediate neighbors, they would potentially have a house right on top of them. Or we'd be forced to go as close to the wetland as possible in order to space things up. None of that makes sense to me from the point of view of, of the neighborhood or what the town is looking for compared to the location closer to the street aligned with the other houses, setback from the street so that it's in keeping with the, the rest of the neighborhood. I'm just raising that.
Yeah, no, I, I, and, and I, you know, I, I, we can discuss that, but I, I you know, you, you might have a point there and you might not, but I think our zoning by law on this point is pretty clear. You can't have a dwelling unit where you don't have a hundred-and-fifty-foot lot width, period. It's, it's, to me, it's that clear and simple. What, what else, what comes after that is, is, you know, is kinda moot. It's, it's, it, it's crystal clear in my mind. But as I said, you know, it's, it's, we can't just now say like, well, maybe we'll put it further, further. You know, I don't know. We, we can't Yep, yep. And then that, where is that? Somewhere on the bottom left, I think it says where it's a frontage exception lot somewhere. But anyways, I am willing to, unless Kristen, do you wanna say something or do you just, is this?
I don't think so. I mean, we're happy to take a look at, at the memo, but I don't think we have anything to add at this time.
Cool, cool. Can I have a motion to continue?
Is, is that what the, is that what's being requested here? Because I, I just I, I, I have what I need from town council. I don't need town council to tell me like, okay, now I read Mr. Wind's memo. I just don't see it changing their position, so.
No, I, neither do I, but I, I think we, we we owe the applicant this, this continuation just so that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. You know, they, you know, they submitted some information and, and, you know, I I mean, shame on them not doing that earlier.
At the morning of, before the hearing, like.
That, right, no, absolutely, absolutely. Not, not, maybe not even that. And I, I think it was just sent, sent to Kim. And Kim was not in today, but I, 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 I think we, we owe him that favor that, that, you know, we got the memo, we wanna read it. And before we make a decision, let's, let's get all the information and let's get a let's get an opinion from town council. And, you know, having, having this memo is, might be, might be good for town council to, to sort of focus their response on. So, but as I said, you know, it's, it's I, I don't, I don't see what's, what's gonna be changing my mind, but, you know, stranger things have happened. So I, I would like to entertain a motion to continue.
I move that we continue the application for a special permit under zoning bylaws. Section four-point-two-point-two-point-two and eleven-point-six for a nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine square foot detached additional dwelling unit at two-six-two Virginia Road.
Can I have a second?
I mean, I, I, I'm not really in favor of this motion, but I'm willing to go along with it because I understand that you, I, I appreciate why you want to. So I will second that. I see Elizabeth has her hand up though.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the agenda, so this is for June thirteenth. Give me a second, it's it's not downloading. Oh, there we go. So you can time seven, it'd be for seven fifteen, please.
Seven, seven fifteen.
Okay, should I amend by motion?
We'll, we'll just include that, seven fifteen on June the thirteenth. All those in favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. So see you then.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I make one more invitation that, that is to the other members of the board to, to visit the site as you did. So they can fully inform themselves of the options that we have there and the potential suitability of the proposed siding that we have.
I, I leave that up, I leave that up to them. I, as I said, you know, if, if there is, there is a line drawn on that plan, on your existing conditions plan. And it, the line is the line. And, you know, going out to site, I, you know, what, what your other options are, I, I don't know. You know, not, not everybody can do it and you can always you know, add, add a unit to your existing building and, and you, you have space further on. I mean, I'm, you know, I can, I can see that. I'm, I'm a professional, at least I used to be. And I can see that you, you have space for that. So anyway.
Thank you.
Yep. So board members, if you wanna swing by there, it's, you know, it's in Concord, so it's not, it's not a far drive, but you can swing out there if you wish. Seven-ten, Concord Public Schools for variance on the zoning by law sections eleven-seven to add solar parking canopy within the forty-foot front set. to add solar parking canopy within the forty-foot front setback at nine two three Old Marlboro Road. Who is here to speak for that? Jason. Go ahead, Mr. Balger.
Hello, um my name is Jason Balger. I'm the interim director of the Concord Municipal Light Plant. We have a variance application before we tonight for some panels that extend a little bit into the forty-foot um setback. The application kind of outlines the number of panels and the amount that they encroached. It's about fifteen feet and a few places. Um this is a project that was voted and approved by town meeting with this specific design in mind. And the project was designed to make sure that the school would be net zero so that this number of panels uh would be required to do that. If we um we unfortunately don't have a lot of land on the school to sort of repurpose these or move them into another place. And so we're making best use of the parking lot by adding these these uh panels as canopies over the existing parking lot. So um I don't know if you, I can or Elizabeth wants to pull up the plan. I've got in front of me, if you guys wanna take a look at that.
Yeah, as I said, by the earlier meanings, a picture paints a thousand, big picture, no, a picture better than a thousand words, so.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah.
And can you zoom in a little bit, Elizabeth? Thank you. So we have the setback, which is kind of a faint pink line here. And you'll see that the, there's the setback line, and you'll see that a few of the canopies, uh either one of their foundation posts or some of the, sometimes just the panels themselves hang over um portions of the setback. Most of them are within, you know, closer to the property of the building than the existing parking is or would be.
Okay, so it's it's uh only front setback, right?
Yes, correct.
Oh, and it's in uh four uh locations. So that's that's your presentation, Mr. Balger.
Yes, and um we did retain counsel to help with the application and review this and um in the application, it explains, you know, the reasons why that we feel like this is uh worth a a variance.
And I'm I'm happy to answer any questions too um about the application.
So so Kristen, you you pulled the uh, you put the application together?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So it's just kind of odd if we wanna send this to the town council for review, right?
Yeah, I can I can definitely review it if you want. I've already got it, so.
Maybe you can ask me not to review. Well, um yeah, here is, here is, okay, any questions from the board? Let me, let me go there first.
It pains me significantly because I happen to like the project, but I don't think this qualifies for a variance. You may remember I sent out a memorandum some time ago, just generally addressing variances, et cetera. We have so few. I would point out that the standards that need to be met are either soil conditions, which includes shape and topography. It's gotta be a hardship and it's gotta deal with the public good. And there's a case called Kirkwood versus Board of Appeals of Rockport. Slightly different, but it says that uh the fact that a government regulation uh happens to impact negatively an option available to the owner doesn't justify the variance. And I raised that one because I thought the supplemental memorandum that was submitted was quite good and pointed out what the town had voted for. And therefore, I kind of see that as a, one of those town regulations that one could say, well, that's what the town voted for, town meeting, therefore, we should grant the variance. I don't think the Kirkwood case supports that argument. And the second one uh is a case I I identified called Martin versus the Board of Appeals of Yarmouth. And in that case, it was held, among other things, that a placement of a structure while desirable desirable for the town are not enough to support the variance. So having said that, cited those two cases and that the board would have to find all three conditions, not just one or the other, but they're all three um to grant the variance. Unfortunately, I don't, even though I'm not voting on this one, I do raise to the board's attention those concerns.
Yep. Um Elizabeth, Ravi, wanna any other questions on this?
Um, just to have it out there, can you tell us briefly how you would be negatively impacted if you were to just cut the arrays and the support right at the setback and keep it within this, within the setback?
Yeah, that was in the application. Um it has to do with the cost to uh re-scope the work. Delays going out to bid, uh the unlikelihood of meeting net zero for the school. Um which was again, part of the, another town meeting vote for approving the school itself, that it would be net zero. Um Kristen, were there any other specific hardships mentioned? Those are the ones that I remember.
I I think you pretty much covered it. Yeah, those are the hardships.
Yeah, okay, so the application was super thorough, but so those, was it fifty-six arrays that would be or panels that would be outside of the setback, something like that? That would be the difference between producing enough solar and not?
Yes, it's about four percent, a little under four percent of the total amount.
And that's, that's fatal to the net zero.
Correct.
Okay.
Say, if I could
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um to um Tom's point, because um I I did put a lot of thought in into this application before it was submitted. Um and I think there's a couple of things um to each of the points that Tom made that um I I think can be addressed. Um, this is the the school right here. Um, I will turn on and off um the green. That's the groundwater conservancy district. Um, the town well is actually right adjacent to the property right here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the property is limited as far as the um amount of impervious coverage by buildings and pavement um that can be on the property. Um, from a a soil and topography standpoint, um, all of the properties in this area are primarily all um more level, the back part of the school right here. This um drops down. Um, this is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Uh it drops down in the back um to where this large wetland is. And um so the, also with the the shape of the property, it and maybe I can turn this on. Uh hang on one second. Um, the shape of the property has this jog into the property and then also this jog in the property. Um and all of this back here is that sloped area. Um, so from a use standpoint, it is not a residential use. Um it in in a residential neighborhood, it is a municipal use. Um the use itself is different. Um, the size and shape of and topography of the property um is different. And um they are limited to having to do all of their building in the front portion of the property. Um, the hardship, um they've already shown financially um to just cut back those panels from a financial to scoping out um what that means financially. The scope out that project to cut them back. Also financially, um the hardship to delay the project because it would have to be re-scoped and re- and possibly rebid. Um, so those um to to Tom's point, um I I do feel that the findings for a variance, you know, can be made. And I'd love to hear Tom's uh your Tom rebuttal, or if Kristen also has anything to add.
Yeah, I would.
Sorry, no, go ahead, Kristen.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just gonna say if you could speak more specifically to what your concerns are with it not meeting the the variance requirements, but that's essentially what Elizabeth asked, so. Go ahead.
I would never disagree with Elizabeth.
So not true.
Uh, no, I think uh I have no further, I have no comment. I think you make valid points. Whether, and I would not anticipate anybody objecting to granting the variance. I just know for the board, if you elect to do so, you do have to write an opinion that shows pretty much what Elizabeth stated, because you can't just say yes, it meets all the three subconditions. You gotta point out why.
Yeah, yeah, so.
In any event.
I and I I know who's gonna write this condition, this uh this decision, so I I I think she will uh she will write what she said, so. Um.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Ravi.
Just, you know, w- w- why not rooftop solar here? I I'm not sure I, maybe it's.
There's also rooftop solar already.
Okay, so we need the rooftop plus the canopies to get to the net zero.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, it's it's interesting, Tom's point about the, you know, a governmental regulation failed, not being able to comply with governmental regulation, because to me, it's here, it's the hardship is we can't get to net zero without this four percent of the panels being part of the array, and there's nowhere else to put them. So what the hardship is, you can't come get to net zero, and that's the quote-unquote governmental regulation you gotta comply with.
Um, the other hardship is that the construction is already underway, and that changing the the plans at this point could require rebidding some portion or interfering with the construction of the school, which could delay things and cost the school construction.
Yeah, so so I guess what the, was the construction plan for the school done? And then you you came in with a kind of, okay, now we gotta put in the solar and you know, or was, like, why wasn't that all done upfront so that we knew about this issue before?
One is, you know, one is a taxpayer program and one is a rate payer program, so we're working in conjunction with each other, but there's kind of a necessary wall between the two projects. So we're trying to keep them as isolated as we can, but for paving and for foundations and for some of that the conduit that has to go from the um canopies over to where the building has permanent power. I think that's where the concerns are, where the two schedules kind of overlap a bit.
Okay.
Good. Um I, we have a a hand up. So let's uh let's open this up for a public comment. And Susan Murray. Uh, you can unmute. Can you, up there, up there, ooh, you were just unmuted. Try again. Yep, there you go.
Okay, um, I'm sort of new to all this and
Can I have your name and your address? I can have your name and your address, please.
Okay, Susan Murray, and I live right across the street from the school.
All right.
And as far as the variance goes, they said at the two thousand and twenty-three town meeting, it was approved, but were the parking canopies approved then? Are you?
Yes.
The the parking canopies, so they knew back in two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes.
And how high are these?
Um, fifteen, twenty feet. They're high. They're they're meant to be underneath or above the cars that are parked there so that it provides shade and relief from the elements.
Okay, so this kind of was the first sort of that we, anyway, as far as the variance goes, I would be opposed to it.
Hmm.
And so I don't know what steps we have to take or get together with our neighbors because we look right out on it. We don't know that much about it or what it's going to look like, that's or that much about it. And the fact that it is a variance, I would have to say we'd be against it, but approving it.
Okay.
I thought that the person who uh started out uh looking at legal precedents, I thought that was very good, and I don't have that kind of expertise right now or ever. Uh, but I think we need some more people to look at this, that's all.
Yeah, and I think I think we, you know, we we are as a board are are looking at this, and I think, you know, uh Mrs. Swaim, who made that uh that comment and that argument um brought brought the 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 legal uh, the legal conditions, the 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 legal wording up up to us. And I think uh Elizabeth used uh the applicant um um did um uh did sort of a rebuttal and answered answered uh the reasons why um it really needs to be what it is. So and and mind you, the variance is not for the canopies per se. It's only for, because I, the school uh can build the canopies just fine, except on those little four little spots where it's hanging over uh the front setback, if you will. So that's that's where we give the variance, where we are not uh and if if we if we are gonna give the variance, it's just for those uh little areas. If we were not going to give the variance, the canopies would still be there just a tad smaller, just a, just a, you know, few feet setback from the uh uh from the property line. That's uh that's really what the variance is all about. Um Kristen, this is the town attorney. She's, she can also answer your question, I think, maybe better than I can.
No, that that was perfect, but uh just a couple of, I just wanted to add on based on what you were saying. And Jason, let me know if you have anything to add on this as well. Um but uh as Teo said, the uh it's really just a very small portion of the canopy that is in the setback, and that is what is at issue here, so it's not.
Elizabeth, can you pull up the plan again, maybe?
Um, and sort of ironically, I believe, um and Jason, this is where you you might wanna jump in if you have anything to add, but um canopies were chosen because, in part, because they're a more aesthetic choice. If it was ground-mounted solar, there are significant statutory protections for ground-mounted solar, such that uh uh there would not need to be a variance, but a special permit instead, um which would be easier to obtain. So actually, you know, the canopies were made um in an effort to have a streamlined design and to meet the solar goals and the net zero goals. Um, and to have an aesthetic um aesthetically pleasing element to the project rather than have a large ground-mounted solar. Um, so I just thought that might also uh be useful to you, but if you have any specific concerns about uh the canopy solar, um we're up, of course, happy to address those as well.
Yeah, yeah, El- Elizabeth, any chance you can sort of highlight the areas that uh that we're talking about?
Um, there I don't.
No, no, otherwise go over it with with your hands, starting from the top there, right? And then and then indicate the setback line.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah. Oops, that's a bit bit much, but.
Just just to orient you to the, to what's on the screen, the blue panels are, I believe, the solar panels.
Right, right. And 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 the road sort of runs diagonally uh on the page there. And then wherever the blue goes over that light pink line, like there, you know, that's the light pink line, that's a setback line. So that that's a variance, that that little point there, that would be the variance. And then further down to the left, there's two areas. So the the remainder of the, all the other areas uh all the other areas uh comply with all of our regulations. So the the school is free to build those um without co- without coming to us. So the the schools are asking just to get, you know, from an full economic benefit and um to to, for us to to come up with a variance here. So I hope that answers your, your question, Ms. Murray.
Uh, yes, is this diagram available anyplace or can they?
This is, uh, yeah, it is on a town's website. If you go to the, the, the current, uh, if you go to zoning board of appeals, uh. Who is owning board of appeals, uh, website, there is a, there must, there's a tab somewhere that says current meeting documents. And um, all, all the documents for this particular, and, and actually also for, for all of our other agenda items. But they're nice, nicely listed and, you know, it's the whole application, the narrative, uh, the, the plans, et cetera, are all there. So they, feel free to go there and, and review them.
Okay.
Thank you, um, any other questions from uh, public? Seeing none, um, closing the public uh, hearing portion or the public input portion of this, this hearing. Um. And so I need discussion from the board. Um, and actually before, before there was a discussion from the board, I, I, I am gonna suggest. That we continue this uh, to our next hearing. So that we have uh, the ability to read the decision and, and. Feel good about the decision as it is being written. Um. And, um, and, and because, yeah, because Tom raised these uh, these questions, um. Uh, I wanna make sure that they are gonna be fully addressed in the, in the decision and that Tom also feels comfortable. Because this is not the last variance, Tom.
No, that's true, although I'm, I'm very comfortable with the presentation that Elizabeth made. And uh, so I, I think the issues are on the table and they've been clarified. So I'm comfortable with the progress and I think where this is going.
But um, question from Mr. Bolger, do you need a decision tonight or can we wait a month?
Um, if we wait a month, we'll have to wait until we go out to bid, because we obviously can't go out to bid with um, uncertainty with the variance. So um, of, of course, if the board, you know, wishes to wait a month, we're gonna have to wait a month. Uh, but being able to have the variance in hand would allow us to go out to bid, so.
Understood, members of the board. Your thoughts?
Um, there were, um. Just understanding the, the issue of time, um. The board does have a um, meeting next Thursday for the two seventy-five Forest Ridge Road. Uh, which uh, it's, our understanding the applicant is going back to redesign that project. And has requested a continuance uh, without discussion. Um, I can commit to have a draft decision for the board um, before that meeting next Thursday.
You, you can commit?
Sure.
Yeah, like on Thursday morning, you know, and send it, send it to Kim, who then is.
Uh, no, I, 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 I can commit to get it to Kim probably by Wednesday.
Excellent, excellent.
Actually, Monday, Monday or Tuesday, so.
If, 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 if you can do that, I would feel, uh, I would feel a lot more comfortable indeed. I, I, I hate to hold up uh, the process, but. You know, it's variance, we. We're not issuing these often and I just wanna make sure that uh. That we have the eyes dotted and the T's crossed. So, and if we know as a board that, you know, this, this. Uh, this decision is coming, then, you know, reserve some time Wednesday to, to read through it, please. Okay, that said.
Um, I have a question about that, just thinking logistically about that meeting going forward next week. That probably doesn't need to be in person then?
Uh, no, we're going to change it to virtual.
I, uh, well, that's su- sure, but let's talk about that. I, I do wanna revisit that point. It's just that we, we have, let, let's do that at the end of this. Um, let's, 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 let's deal with this, this subject now. So I would like to entertain a motion to continue uh, this. Uh. This hearing to next Thursday, which is the sixteenth at seven oh five. Hmm?
Yes, seven oh five.
Seven oh five, um, to um, review the decision and um. And vote on it, um. Can I get a motion?
I move that we continue the discussion of Concord Public Schools' application for a variance under zoning by law section eleven point seven. To add solar parking canopy within the forty foot setback at nine twenty-three Old Marlboro Road. Uh, continue it until next Thursday, May sixteenth at seven oh five.
Second.
All does in favor, Ms. Wylandt?
Aye.
Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Uh, chair votes aye as well. So see you uh, next Thursday.
That was good, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, uh, since I, since it's seven fifteen, let's uh, hear from Jennifer Farrell, Farrell. For the renewal of a special permit on the zoning by law, by law, section five, four, five, and eleven, six. To hold special events at eleven Wheeler Road and four one five Plainfield Road. Anybody here to speak on uh, this petition?
Um, I'm, I'm here just, um, I'm Jen Farrell, eighty-nine, seven star lane. And I just would like to um, renew our existing um, five year permit. That we've had a special permit to hold events at eleven Wheeler Road at the farm stand. Um. And it's.
You've had a five year permit?
We have.
Good.
And then, um, it's, the way it was written and the way it was approved last time is, um, I'm not changing anything, it would be exactly the same.
Good, good, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Um, I have a question. I don't see any comments or any feedback from your neighbors or um, for or against. Is, have you had any comments from any neighbors, one way or the other, about these events?
No, we haven't had any problem with the neighbors, um, that we're aware of, we're friendly with our neighbors and um, they usually come to the events. And I think the, the main thing is our, um, the parking, you try to keep that kind of under control. And we haven't had any, any issues with that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good, um, Ravi, Tom, questions?
No, I don't have any, no questions.
Elizabeth?
Um, the building commissioner um, has not received any um, issues or concerns. Uh, any events are coordinated with uh, the police department if there are police details needed um, at Wheeler Road and Sudbury Road.
Good, thank you, thank you for rela- relaying that, um. Any questions from the public, opening it up for public comment here? Not seeing any hands raised, so close that section of the hearing. Um, any discussion, uh, board members, any motions, anything?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Um, I was waiting for that, thank you.
Return.
The application of Jennifer Farrell for the renewal of a special permit on the zoning by law sections five, four, five, eleven, six. To hold special events at eleven Wheeler Road and four fifteen Plainfield Road uh, for, for the five years on the same uh, terms as previously.
Okay, thank you.
Let's laugh about.
Yep, do, do I hear a second?
I second.
A second, all does in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Ms. Wylandt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, congratulations and good luck with the events.
Thank you.
It's just past seven twenty, Metro and Gale Bar uh, for a special permit on the zoning by law sections four, two, two, two. And eleven, six for a one thousand square foot detached additional dwelling unit at two eighty-seven Lindsay Pond Road. So, um. Here we, uh. Here we are, just like the first, uh, the second agenda item tonight, um. We did listen to, uh, last time we did listen to the uh, presentation from the applicant. But then we got stuck on uh, the square footage uh, of the basement being included in uh, the calculations. Um, so we kind of halted discussions there and said. Town council, what do you think? So we got a, a memo from town council. Um, that I saw, yeah, I kind of followed and I was, and then um, just again relatively recently. But we had at least time to read it this time, we got a memo from the applicant's attorney, which, you know. You know, I, I, I also thought it was very, uh, it was a very reasonable ar- uh, argument. So I'm, uh. I think I know where I stand or I at least lean to, um. But um, I do um, wanna see whether the board wants to start talking about this and start discussing it. Um, I'm sure that since uh, the applicant's attorney is here, um, you know, he might wanna say a word or two. Um, but um, what does the board uh, feel like? I, is, is there clarity between the members of the board? Do, do, do you kind of know where you stand or?
I, I found Mr. Silverman's letter to be convincing, um, and as I read our town council memo that clearly outlined. Maybe the basement counts, maybe the, it doesn't, maybe it does, in, you know, she really got all of that out there. Um, but the uh, the reference that Mr. Silverman's letter brings in from Luke's versus election commissioner of Worcester. That uh, if a specific provision is enacted subsequent to a more general rule, the specific and not the general rule applies.
Mm-hmm.
To my eye, that looks like that would be controlling, but I wonder what Mr. Swaim thinks, because I find his uh, powers of analysis to be significant.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I was, uh, one, concerned about the allocation of basement space. To the calculation of the seven hundred fifty square feet or the nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. I was, uh, and, and I am mindful that the town council had before it the opinion of the applicant's attorneys. So was able to take into consideration those comments, notwithstanding those comments. Of the applicant's attorney, the town council came down and said, no, basements, you either gotta count it. Within your thousands or, or seven hundred fifty, or you, you can't do it. You can't use the seven fifty and the thousand without counting any space you have for the basement. So I stand uh, with the town council on that point, because I thought the town council was excellent in pointing out the opposite arguments. And notwithstanding that, came down with the opinion that uh, basement has to be counted. And I appreciate that, that the opinion of town council can be. Overwritten at the next town meeting, should the planning board or some other group wish to submit an amendment to that section. To eliminate that question, whether or not it would pass, that's a whole nother issue, but, but they could do that if that's of concern. So I stand with town council at this point on that issue.
And you know, I, I think town council also said in their memo, there are arguments on the other side and Mr. Silverstein made those arguments. Uh, Mr. So, he is a very persuasive attorney, he's convinced me in the past, uh, I think there was an ADU on Commonwealth Ave or something where.
Yep.
You know, I, I was convinced, uh, but here are, you know, I think I'm with Tom. Um, you know, I think the reference to residence districts in the max far provision is in there. Because it needs to distinguish it from uh, non-residential uses where the max far doesn't apply. So I don't read that as this specific section, which is anti-mansionization, all of a sudden. You know, trying to alter the definition of gross floor area. Um, yeah, so I, you know, I, I, and, and to me, it, it, it doesn't make a ton of sense. That you wouldn't count basements, because I think, as we discussed, y- you could get way over the seven fifty in a hurry. Um, so why, you know, small additional dwelling units, but you, you know, you could have a huge base. You can double disguise by finishing the basement underneath it, right? Like now you got a fifteen hundred square foot house and I don't think that's what was envisioned um, by the ADU provision when, when it was approved at town meeting, so that.
I, I agree with all, Ms. Silverstein, I, I see your hand up, but I, I do wanna put my two cents in for what that, what's that worth? Uh, I, 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 I agree with you, Ravi, that uh, I, I, I'm, I'm with Elizabeth here. So we gotta have, we need to be doing some talking here, because I, you know, we need to come to a, to consensus. Um. I agree with you that the town uh, or town meeting man who voted on this. Was indeed thinking, just a tiny little house, no basement, nothing, just a tiny little unit, you know, one, maybe two bedrooms. Um, in a small unit, that I think is what town, and it didn't envision anything bigger. That being said, I think it's very. It, it doesn't state that anywhere that it doesn't, uh, that, that uh, basements should be included. What it does say in the overarching, I think in my mind, uh, zoning, uh. Piece says, in all residential districts, you don't count basements, period. And that's.
About the max far, right? Like that's not an overarching, the overarching to me is the definition section, what is gross floor area? Basements are included and in other specific places, you have to say basements are excluded if you want.
No, 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 but it doesn't say, it's still, it doesn't say that it's ex, uh, it's, it's silent on it.
But it's not silent in some other provisions where it says, for this purpose, when you're calculating, you know, for the non-conforming expansions, right? You exclude basements. Oh, why, why would it need to say that?
It's four point.
Basements are excluded.
It's, it's, it's just reinforcing the point, it's, it's just that it doesn't, doesn't say something, doesn't mean that it then means the opposite. Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I, I come down.
Well, no, no, that, I mean, that's a pretty basic principle of statutory interpretation, right? If like, if in one provision you explicitly exclude something and then the next provision next to it, you don't explicitly exclude it. That means you didn't mean to exclude it, like that's so, I, you know, I. Yeah, I, I, I think the arguments are stronger that town council makes, um. And, and it just, it does not make sense to me that you would read the max far provision to say. You're changing the definition of gross floor area for everything else in the bylaw.
No, so I didn't, uh, I don't.
I, I have to ask this though, sorry.
Go ahead, try Elizabeth.
Four, four point two, point two, point two comes in time after everything else, is that the newest component?
Yep.
Okay. So you're saying that because it doesn't say it will be done differently in this, that we go back to the old way? We're, we're referencing the way the gross far is defined previously. But it would need to be.
No, I'm, I'm saying the max floor area ratio section of the bylaw is not a definitional section. Like gross floor area is defined in the bylaws to include basements. And where you're applying, where you use defined term in other provisions, when you want to, you say it's gross floor area excluding basements.
No, where, where, where do you say, where do you, where do you see that definition of gross floor area?
It's in section one.
Hmm?
Section one. Definitions.
One point, uh, three point twelve.
No, it's not, because it, it, in a. No, it's not, because it, it, in the definition section, it's not mentioned.
It's one point three point twelve, I think, Robbie.
Yeah.
Gross floor area, someone was. Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Jonathan Silverstein, I'm Damon Mills Square for the applicant. It's very hard for a lawyer to hear all these issues discussed and, and not chime in. So. Thanks for, for letting me have a say here. So I guess I wanted to make a few points. Wanted to address some of the points that have been brought up by members of the board. I think first and foremost, I wanted to point out that. Very clearly, the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer who's charged with interpreting and applying this bylaw. Very clearly informed the board that he has never viewed basements as being included. In gross floor area for purposes of ADUs. And so bear in mind, many ADUs would not have to come to the board. So really what's before this board is going from seven fifty to one thousand. Certainly, the board had every right to raise the question of, of whether that should include basements. But had the applicant not come to the board. And just had a seven hundred fifty square foot first floor ADU. You heard from the building commissioner who's charged with interpreting and enforcing the bylaw. That he does not. View basements as being included. And I, I think that's important here. Secondly. I want to point out that. There is no context that I have found in the zoning bylaw. Where residential basements are included in FAR. So when. The town meeting voted to allow. I, I'm sorry, in gross floor area. So when town meeting voted to allow. ADUs of seven fifty or buys special permit, one thousand square feet. There was no reason for anyone. To think that basements should be included. And though. Certainly, it's true that the expression of one can sometimes mean the exclusion of another, or, you know. I'm not going to try to butcher the legal Latin of inclusion of the one means exclusion of the other. But the fact is that there literally is no other context in which basements are included in the floor area. In your zoning bylaw. So this would be the one and only circumstance. Where a residential building has to include. A basement space in the gross floor area. And there's no expression of that intent anywhere in the bylaw. And I, I think that is especially compelling when you put it against this specific reason. That. In the ADU provision. That there's a size limitation. It's to not change the appearance of the town. Basements do not change the appearance of the town. Big. Structures change the appearance of the town. And, and I would point out that. That specific language was not in any way addressed in, in town council's opinion. And I think. I don't know of many single family homes being built in Concord these days that are fifteen hundred square feet. So even if you had. You know, the doomsday scenario of a seven hundred fifty square foot. ADU with a seven hundred fifty square foot basement. That would not, in my view, result in the functional. Floor area similar to most principal structures. In the town. I think that's an extremely unlikely scenario. Sure, someone could have a tiny house as their primary structure and decide to build an ADU. But I don't think that you. Interpret bylaws based upon. Theoretical possibility. I think you should look at. And, and the reason that there's so much deference to local boards and interpreting and applying their bylaws is. You know. What is the general and prevalent circumstance in the town? And it's not fifteen hundred square foot primary dwellings. It's significantly larger than that. And I think that. That, you know, it also makes sense that, you know. Anything significantly larger, you know, a thousand square foot. Primary floor or above ground ADU. Still has to come to this board. And so you still have the discretion, you know. Even if you interpret the bylaw consistently with the building commissioner and with my opinion. You still have discretion. To approve or deny special permits. So it's not like you're writing blank checks for applicants. And specifically as to this applicant, I would know a couple of things. Number one. This is a very large property. They don't. As proposed. I don't even think, and Bruce can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think they're even going to be at one tenth of the FAR that would be supported. On this property. And so. They've been so mindful about the design of this project. And so I don't think that. There's any risk of this project altering the appearance of the town. As stated in the zoning bylaw. And lastly, just to the point that was made with respect to town meeting being able to. Amend zoning bylaw, I would say, you know, in fairness to my applicant, you know, my client, who's before you now. Where town council. Made very clear, there are arguments on both sides. They gave an opinion of which argument they think is the stronger. Building commissioner gave. You know, has, has reached a different conclusion, as have I. I think if there should be clarification or a desire to clarify. Punishing my client who's put so much time. Emotion, energy and, and thought into this project, which is universally supported by all their neighbors. And requiring, you know, denying this project. Where there's at best a question about whether or not basements have to be excluded. I would say, I would flip that and say that. If, if the planning board or others feel that basements should not be excluded in ADUs, even though they're. Excluded for every other residential. Building in every other context in the zoning bylaw. I would suggest that that should be done. Intentionally by town meeting and not based upon. This sort of balancing argument, one argument against another. So thank you so much for, for giving me the time to, to make those points and I'm happy to. Address any questions the board may have.
Elizabeth, I think you, you have your hand up. Thank you, by the way, Ms. Silverstein, that was a, that was a good presentation. Good arguments.
I can just give you, from my perspective, I, one, I think the. The statement that the building commissioner has never counted basements. While it's true, it needs to be in context. The only time the building commissioner ever started evaluating and doing floor area growth. Floor area calculations was when the max FAR bylaw was passed by town meeting. And that bylaw specifically excludes basements. I can tell you while town council isn't here to, and I often know about. Intent does not. Does not go into interpreting the zoning bylaw. I can just tell you that what the planning board. Did, when they did amend the bylaw in twenty twenty and provide town meeting. That the. The bylaw was specifically written, that it says small additional dwelling units. The square footage of the homes and principal dwellings in Concord has no bearing on. A small additional dwelling unit and there's specifically, the board did not. Include language to exclude basements. For that primary reason, to have these small additional dwelling units. They are not principal residents. They're to, to rent or to use for family and. That's the reason that the, you know, the bylaw does not exclude basements. The building commissioner never counted basements in the, when calculating gross floor area because under six two thirteen. He does not have to. So. That's just to put it into, to context, but.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Elizabeth. When you, when you talk about small additional dwelling units, right, the unit stays small, whether you have a basement or not, right? I think when people talk about small, and when they wanted small units. They were envisioning a smaller. Unit out on the site. And that's why it was kept. Capt at seven fifty or a thousand, whether then there is a basement or not. I don't think.
I also think it's not just the appearance, right? It's, it's small dwelling units that will all, it's two different criteria, right? It's appearance and it's also the size because if you have a fifteen hundred square footer, you can have more tenants living in there. And I think there's people who feel strongly that they don't want as many people living in one of these rental units as you.
I'm, I'm not sure that you can have bedrooms in a basement, Ravi, I, I think.
You can have a bedroom in a basement. You, you have to have.
Well, and have the bedrooms there, you put all the other stuff and have more bedrooms upstairs, right? Like it's, it's about having space to fit more people, right? So I, I don't think it's just about the appearance. And, and I, I heard Matt Johnson chime in on one of these discussions. Cause we consistently hear on ADU applications that people are worried about them being too big, right? I think I heard Matt Johnson kind of echo what Elizabeth said about what the intent was of the planning board when they were.
Right, right. But I, I, I'm still stuck on the, on the point here and I've got a couple more hands up here, but I'm still stuck on the point where I just said. You know, excluded from gross floor area and the residence districts are basements. You know, that it just says, says it so clearly in the zoning bylaw, so.
But it, it, it does, and town council has seen that and said. That doesn't, that's not dispositive, right? So, you know, if town council said to me. It says that in six to thirteen, so that's what it means. That's, that's too easy, right? Like if, if, if it was that easy, we would have heard that opinion from town council and we didn't.
Yeah. Anyway.
See, oh, can I, can I just add? So the maximum FAR specifically. Adopted to deal with the mansionization and the massing issue. And that, that. Massing issue is, is different than, you know, ADU, it was to provide small in size. Not, not massing. You know, somebody can build a thousand square foot ADU. You know, ten by ten and, and, you know, go up till they get to a thousand square feet and. The, the ADU section is specifically dealing with size. It's not, it's not dealing with massing. And when, when town meeting and the planning board went through and did six two thirteen and the max, maximum FAR. That, that is the reason they intentionally excluded basements because they're below ground. And they don't add to the massing. So. Small in the ADU is dealing with size, not massing. But obviously, I need to bring this conversation back to the planning board because there's obviously.
Plan, plan, and, and, and I think town meeting, I, I think, I think, when, 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 when people talk at town meeting about small ADUs, they. They not think, they, they think about small units. They, you know, they think about massing and whether there is anything on the ground. Or not. I don't think they, they.
I, this will definitely be put on the list.
Thank you. This is Ringall.
Evening. Thank you. The issue of small is a. Subjective term. Our site plan clearly shows that this structure, this ADU structure as a detached ADU is smaller. Than the primary residence. Both the primary residence, as it says in our application, and the ADU. Twenty-five hundred square feet, I believe it is in the primary and nine ninety-nine. In the ADU puts us at thirty, just under thirty-five hundred square feet. For a total gross floor area or FAR on this site at point zero three. So Jonathan is correct. We don't even make a tenth. On this thing, so.
Even, even if you include basements, right?
Even if I include the basement, I think I'm going to go to about point zero three. Three, you know, it might get another thousandth digit in there. It's, it's a very minimal amount of additional space. So smallest objective, clearly the unit is smaller. Than the other building and both of these units together are much smaller than any other unit in the neighborhood. Say nothing of the town, of the neighborhood of Lindsay Pond Road and the town as a whole. We also, as Jonathan pointed out, and it was mentioned earlier in the first hearing, we have letters of. Recommendation, not just support, but recommendation on this from all the immediate abutters. For the, for the property. I, I think that, and again, back to the purpose, as Jonathan pointed out, to, and the purpose, you know, to not have an effect on the appearance. We're not having an effect on the appearance. The basement, you can't see from anywhere. There's, there's, there's no effect there. Just wanted to add these things in. Thank you.
But thank you, Mrs. Silverstein.
Thank you. I just wanted to. Address a couple of things that Ms. Hughes said. First of all, I do think that. The question of massing in bulk. Is explicitly relevant to ADUs. Because it's specifically in four two two two. That it talks about not substantially altering the appearance of the town. That is. Very clearly talking about the appearance and bulk and size of the structure above ground, what you can see. So I, I, I very strongly. Submit that, that that's exactly what is being addressed in the very same sentence that the word small is used.
Sorry, she's, she's saying that's what, she's saying that small means something in addition to that, right? Cause it already says small and then it says also it will not substantially alter appearance. So it's, it's talking about the. I think I agree with you about the appearance, but it's, she's saying the intent of small was something beyond that. So I.
Okay, but I, I, I think when you use two, two terms in one sentence, I would submit that. When you're saying small units. That won't substantially alter the appearance of the town, to me. That is clearly saying we want them to be small so they don't alter the appearance of the town. One, you can't divorce one from the other. That's exactly what it's saying. That, I mean, that seems like. You know, the plain reading, reading of it to me. And to Ms. Hughes' statement that. The size of single family homes in Concord isn't relevant, again, I would. Respectfully disagree for a couple of reasons. Number one, how do you interpret the term small? If you're not comparing it to something? It's all relative. So this is a very small. Lit dwelling unit as proposed. Compared to most dwelling units in the town of Concord. And as Bruce said, it's subjective. Number two, the reason I raised that is because town council's memorandum. Specifically raised the issue by saying excluding basement floor area. Would allow property owners to build ADUs with functional gross floor areas similar to the principal structure on the lot. Now, as I said, you might have. Now, as I said, you might have a principal structure on the lot that's smaller than an A D U. But that's not going to be what's generally prevalent in the town of Concord. What's generally prevalent in the town of Concord is going to be something that's much larger. So I disagree with the statement by town council that interpreting it consistently with the building commissioner. Whose interpretation was specifically offered in connection with this proposal, not an F A R issue. Um this proposal for an A D U. Would not. Again, you know, unless you reduce this to the extreme. It's not going to um result in A D U's with the functional equivalence. Of uh area of main houses that those A D U's are built on. Um that's that's. A a very unlikely and speculative event, so that's why I raised the issue of. Um how this house sizes in Concord, so I do think that was relevant.
It's certainly a relevant argument, I you know, I think that. I I I I think Elizabeth was there when the planning board was looking at this and she's giving us some insight into the intent and I don't think the intent was. Hey, if somebody has a bigger lot and a bigger house, you want them to be able to build a bigger A D U, like everybody, thi- thi- this is Concord, right? It's all about. Being egalitarian, so I I think anybody in Concord, no matter if they have a bigger small house, should get to build the same size A D U.
Um Mr. Ringall, um Tom, a little time.
Yes, so sorry, I uh had one item that I had forgotten, there was a mention earlier of the purpose. Uh of the small A D U was to allow for family members and I just want to point out. If you are seven hundred and fifty or nine hundred and ninety nine square feet. And um your family member happens to be uh for some reason or another. Uh a a child that has children and they're now a single person, a single parent. Try to put a single parent and uh two kids in a thousand square foot space. And have space for cooking and and uh sitting down to eat as well. It it doesn't function in that kind of space and bedrooms in the basement with the proper ventilation and the. Uh egress is 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 allowed, allows for that and it doesn't have an impact on the appearance. Or anything else and you still have a small unit and now you have the ability of doing what the A D U. One of the intentions of the A D U is is allowing for family members. So just adding that in because it was mentioned earlier.
Yep, good, good, thank you, um so. Let's uh at least I want to try to follow a little bit of the our regular meeting procedure here, which would be then. Right about now, I would be opening up to public comment here, uh wondering whether there is any public comment. Seeing none, then I'll close the public comment section uh of this this hearing. Um and bring it back to the board, so. What happens uh and I've ever since I been on the board, I've always, we've always voted. As a unit unanimously, right? So if you don't vote unanimous here tonight. Then this application would fail, correct, Elizabeth? Yeah, yeah, so that's where we're at. And 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 so I'm also with that in mind, I'm just not ready to call for a vote here. Um I wanna be uh talking about this a a bit more. You know, I I do. You know, I I from the beginning, I I I did like this application, I thought it was a good application, I got uh. Town council's memo first, so and I kind of agreed with uh with that memo. And then I think uh Mrs. Silverstein's memo has just sort of swayed me to the other side. Um but it doesn't mean that I'm just really absolutely convinced that that's uh the right side, so. Um I'm kind of uh seeing whether there is anything else that uh the board wishes to discuss. Tom, I don't necessarily want to put you on the spot here, but I I'm doing that anyway, since you started this whole thing by uh. Talking about the uh the basement. And have you heard anything tonight that that? Changes your mind that would you that you would? Like to add to the conversation?
Uh, nothing has been said to change my view and the issue been raised and answered. Uh by town council, so I'm still in support of that decision. It strikes me that the last example by the engineer whom by the chance I mentioned last time, I respect greatly, I know his firm, I know him. So I respect their views. The. We've had a couple, I've been on the board a short time, we've had several A D U applications. And I think the A D U's, while meritorious and needed. On a policy matter, and I I happen to be in agreement with them. We often get objections or concerns from neighbors. We did not get that here, I appreciate that, in fact, I thought the proposal itself was terrific. Uh until the issue came up that I was concerned about on the basement. And I think we need to be mindful. That. As A D U's multiply, we need to be very consistent because there are going to be a lot of concerns. In some examples, not so here, but in some examples of. Not being substantially in the benefit of the community and I agree with those folks who said some of these terms are hard to identify, so for that reason. I would be on the side of taking the code as I see it written. That controls size rather strictly, small means small. And I thought the example of the family with the the single family uh mother or father. And having two or three children sleeping in the basement, I don't find that consistent with the A D U concept, so that's why I'm still supporting. The position that town council came down with, other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, no, thank you, I know, I I I I. I agree with you that, you know, that's why I'm I'm a bit struggling here, I'm not forc- I'm not forcing this. I'm afraid of setting a precedent, that being said. I know that if. I know that this needs to be uh cleared up, cleaned up at next town meeting. Just to make sure that we are, you know, just so that that we are clear on this this calculation. But, you know, yeah, go ahead, please.
Wait, or um I just, I think you're developing a really, really important point, which is that we can, you know, sit here and figure out. What we feel like, you know, is like weighing, this is the best. But it there are, you know, there are people responsible for making the code clear. Is it within our right to go back to them and say, could we have more clarity or? Make the decision and say basements don't count, make the basement as big as you want. What would the challenging process be that would then refine that law? There's really, there's nothing and we would just. Go on without knowing what the real intent of the law is.
No, I I think Elizabeth Elizabeth would be the person that that would do that, I'm sure she uh she's written this piece. Uh or at least uh been heavily involved in write um writing this, so I think that's that's where you've. Find what the intent of this uh this bylaw.
I feel like town the town council memo for me doesn't land. Like I need it to land a little stronger to say, yes, we go this way for sure.
But but Elizabeth, that's a very good point, right? It's if you think about it. You know, it's either e- either we interpret it as allowing more expansive reading and let town meeting cut it back or we interpret it as. More restrictive reading and let town meeting expand it, but who's, wh- when you said like, who's gonna challenge it, right?
Right.
If we let people build the larger A D U's, it's it's hard for neighbors to come together and like, let's file a lawsuit, right? But if somebody is sitting there like, I want to build this. They are much more likely to be interested in challenging it and that's how you get a challenge, right? So I I lean towards, let's take the conservative reading and if it needs to be challenged, like that's the avenue.
Yeah, but but I I I think I think no matter what we decide tonight here. Uh I think this is on the list for town meeting to be clarified and you know, next year, uh no matter what. So if we lean. Towards the larger unit, you know, I know that that will be clarified and it will be. Bill uh basements will be ex- excluded next year at town meeting, or at least that will be coming up for a vote at that point in time. Um am I correct, Elizabeth?
Um so, yeah, so the board has already started drafting their um goals and projects memo. Um and they will finalize it, um it might not be um at the next meeting on. Uh May twenty first, it may have to be the meeting on June, so um all um all the members are there. Um but it has already been um. It has already been added to to the list, I already gave them a a heads up that there were. Um there are a couple of other A D U clarifications that need to be made. So um my um my only other um. I guess my point, um should the board um take the less conservative. Um route and town meeting does clarify, you know, what the intent is and basements. Um are included, um then, you know. You this applicant or between now and the time that, you know, probably sometime in February. When the legal notice for town meeting gets um publicized, um you know. Those projects that did move forward and are over a thousand square feet or over seven hundred and fifty square feet would then become. You know, legally nonconforming. Um at that point as well, so and I and I don't and I can't tell you how many applications will be submitted between now and the time. Um that the legal notice for the public hearing for town meeting gets submitted, so. Um the board would have to be comfortable in that understanding.
So it's another question for you, um we had a town meeting that town voted to allow. For two families in Residence B District and that's that's got pretty good support. Are we gonna go to two families? Residence A, Residence double A, is that gonna be on on co- coming down the road?
I'm I'm not sure, um uh generally, um you know, when the. Planning board is going through the action items that are in the envisioned Concord. Long range plan and um they started with Residence C Zone District for two family by special permit. Wait a couple of years to see, you know, how that um progresses. Um progresses and since the adoption of that um bylaw, the the board has only granted, I believe, six or maybe it might be seven now. Special permits over that, um at least two years van. I I don't, I don't see the planning board moving forward at the twenty twenty five annual town meeting. Doing A in Residence A, there there's just not enough time to see, you know, what. Um the bylaw that just passed, you know, what, how that plays out, so I I don't see that happening.
Yeah, because there was there was also some people I need, I know people voiced. Their opinion that that would be a welcome.
Oh, un- un- understandably, but um just. Yeah, not to get too far off track, as you're al- you know, already going to quarter to nine, you have another application. Um the planning board, when they evaluate any zoning bylaw amendment, um there is um the goal of putting forth something that passes. And um so evaluating um town meeting as a whole. Um how they are able to absorb change uh is a factor in any zoning bylaw amendment. And I think between now and April, end of April next year. There would not be enough data or information for people to feel comfortable in in that change.
Sure, sure.
Uh is there any chance there would be a fall town meeting? I've not heard of such, but have you heard of any discussions?
Um I I have not heard. There is, um there's still the unknown about whether the state. Is going to find our M B T A community zoning in compliance. Um and if the legislature does not um push back the compliance date. Uh then there would have to be a fall town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um where do we stand?
So it sounds like there will, there's a process to find clarity on this, so. Isn't necessary, it doesn't have to come from us saying, no, you can't do this, the applicant challenging. And then that's the the process by which the law changes that.
Correct, correct.
Because I I agree with you, Robbie, from an analytical point of view, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I think in this case. It would almost be an unfair burden if we're, you know, if it's kind of weighted evenly with this applicant. As a challenger.
Right, 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 this law will be changed in the next town meeting. It'll be clarified.
Yeah. So is it fair to consider this application just as as a single thing? Not so much unprecedented?
You know, because you'd have to consider every application that comes before you between now and the time the legal notice. For town meeting is published size, which is sometime in February.
So I I I.
But we're not thinking like that we're craft, we're not like refining the law through this process, we're just doing each individual application.
So so I I wonder, I wonder how many A D U's uh Paul has approved that are seven hundred and fifty square feet? That have a basement.
I'm I'm not sure there. There are any. But that that's a, that is a. That's something that we, um I can't answer, um and but it's something that we can do the. You know, we we can do the homework and provide that information to the board if you'd like.
Yeah, I I'm not sure whether that's gonna be, you know. Um what what if he has, right? Well, well, no one, no name, I think I think what from what I saw at the last meeting. He he never cal- he never included them. Uh the basements, um so. He might uh. Somebody has an opinion.
Yeah, I have thought about that and it strikes me that out of fairness to the extent that permits for A D U's have been granted. That they ought to be allowed to remain in place. Those decisions have been made and we are simply now finding that there may be a problem. And that we two wrongs don't make it right and therefore um until clarified. We go with town council opinion, but not look back uh over what was granted or not granted. I don't see that that helps anybody.
Agreed.
Okay, guys, and um anything else? I guess we're gonna vote here, right? And if it's not unanimous, then um it's not passing, so.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, um. Would it be possible? Would the board consider taking a straw vote? Because.
I I.
So much.
I think you heard a straw vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I thought you were saying you were gonna take an actual vote on the application.
Uh yeah, but but I I know where it's gonna go, I think I think I don't need to.
Yeah, so so given that, I I I think I I'm seeing the same writing on the wall as you are.
Yeah.
Um and so much is uh has gone in to this application for my clients. I guess I wanted to raise two issues, one is. If, as it seems to be the case, um it's the only way to um resolve this issue. Uh we can reduce the ceiling. Uh, we can reduce the ceiling height in the basement, pull out the living elements. Um, the seal, we would reduce the ceiling height to below six feet eight inches and under the definition in section one, that would clearly, um, I hope everyone can agree, um, exclude this space.
It's 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 easy, you you've got a contractor, he he can hang a suspended ceiling in there, yeah.
Um, you know, that that's not what I'm suggesting.
So I'm, I'm, so I'm not gonna, um, um, I would caution the board. As far as the building code and how um the building commissioner needs to, um, I'm not sure assistant suspended ceiling um, under that building code and the ceiling height of six eight. And so, um, I, if this is the direction that um, the applicant wishes to go, um, and whether it's, yes, reducing it below six eight. Um, then it what does not get included in the gross floor area. How that gets done? Um, I that's a, that's a question for the building commissioner.
And and I want to be really clear that I did not suggest that in in any way. Um, I believe the intent would actually be to raise the basement floor. Um, not to drop a a suspended ceiling. Um, so I I want to be really clear, that's not at all what I was suggesting. Um. So I guess that's one issue, rather than a denial, um, we would, uh, we would do that, we would obviously have to revise the floor plans and provide those to the board. Uh. The other thing which I was gonna raise, which we we, obviously, the the basement um discussion has has uh taken some time. We have been um going through um a number of hearings before the NRC. Um, as you know, the existing house uh is um within the uh fifty foot uh setback to the resource area. Um, and the NRC has been looking for uh alternative plans to be presented. Uh, and we've been continued to, I believe, the twenty second to um to present some of those alternative plans. And and Bruce can speak to this, but one of the plans um that we're gonna present, which is really the only workable possibility to have this um project um pulled further from the resource area would be to move it, uh. In order to move the main house further out of the resource area buffer, we would have to likewise um move the ADU closer to the street, which would bring it uh slightly within the uh the front setback, which the bylaw gives this board the ability to grant the special permit. It wouldn't be a variance, um, a special permit. Uh, and so we're sort of in this position of um potentially, and we don't know, uh. We're still hoping that NRC will end up on the twenty second approving the current proposed location. So we wouldn't need to ask for that additional relief. But in an abundance of caution, uh, in case the NRC does insist on us seeking that relief. Um, we plan to ask for it and and um I know Elizabeth was kind enough to um indicate she thought we could uh still make it onto the June thirteen agenda if we uh modified that the current proposal to ask for that. It would be the exact same proposal, except um, the ADU would be, um, I don't know, Bruce, five feet into the front setback.
Really, five, roughly five to seven feet, yes.
So, um, in light of all that, um, on behalf of the applicant, I would ask if the board would be willing to continue this matter, so we can give you revised floor plans that show the lower ceiling height, the change to the basement. And also, um, if it becomes necessary, I mean, we'll we'll submit the plans. Um, but during your um June thirteen meeting, we may or may not need to ask the board to consider that setback relief under the bylaw.
When when would you know from the National Resources that you need that?
We won't know until after the twenty second. The the meeting's on the twenty second, so we would know the twenty third.
Okay, so you you can get something to us. Yeah, sort of, you know, and uh it sort of by the weekend before before the thirteenth.
So we would be getting you the request, we would have to submit the application, we would submit it as soon as possible, early in the week. Um, with 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 the plans showing the possible new location. Um, so you'll have everything, um, you know, within, you know, early next week. The only thing we won't know for sure until the twenty third is if we actually need to proceed with that additional uh request for relief.
Okay, um, but, um.
So, given all that, we would respectfully ask for a continuation.
Yeah, I'm 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 fine with that. I do think that just if if since it's a front setback, uh. Which is obviously more visible from the street, I would would ask my fellow board members to uh to do a site visit if possible, if that request comes through, so that they have a better understanding uh of the site and the layout. You know, they might not have necessarily the plans or anything staked out, but I I think it would be a good thing for uh the board members to uh to go by the site and uh and look at it. Um, actually, Mister Ringwall, I very quickly, I'm gonna ask for a motion here.
I was just gonna mention that uh there is a uh substantial earth and berm in front of the of the the portion of the site where this uh ADU would be cited. Um, we are proposing to remove the big pines and the invasive growth and plant it with new trees and shrubbery. We have a an LA uh landscape architecture plan that shows the revised plantings on that, so the the berm would still be there and it would still have a lot of vegetation on it to shield this from the road in that area where it would be there, which we will add to the application so that you can see it's well shielded.
Cool, we'll we'll cross that bridge when we get there, um. Can I have a motion to uh to continue this?
Sure, I uh make a motion.
We have the date and time, it's seven ten, are we at?
No, seven twenty, I think.
June thirteenth, seven twenty.
Hang on, hang on, Elizabeth. A moment.
Yes, Theo, it's seven twenty.
Okay, thank you. Um, I can count, I still can count. Um, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, I make a motion that we continue uh Matthew and Gail Burr's application for a special permit under zoning bylaws, section four point two point two point two and eleven point six for a thousand square foot detached additional dwelling unit at two eighty seven Lindsay Pond Road to June thirteenth at seven twenty.
Second.
All of the favor, Miss Violet Leonard.
Aye.
Mister Faya.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, so see you back on the next month.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Yeah. Um, seven, seven twenty-five, target painting and contractor for sign variance on assigned bylaws sections three C two and eight B to allow a third hanging sign at eighty-nine Thero Street. Anybody here to speak in favor of or speak for the applicant? Nobody. Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Nardi, not not for target.
I would point out, they did not appear last time either.
Right, and that's why, that's why we continued it, so, um.
I would recommend.
That's naughty, go ahead. Well, I asked him. You need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, Ed. Yes, hi, Ed Nardi, twenty-nine Academy Lane. I was just gonna comment on the signage, if that's appropriate or not.
Are you uh, are you the applicant?
No, I am not. No, no.
You know, so then.
I'm just a neighbor, that's all.
Okay, you can comment. But when we get there. Um, so, uh, hold your thought for a moment, please. Um. I wanna finish that thought, Tom, that indeed they were not here last time. I think we started to be having a bit of a clear understanding on where we were heading. Right, um, so I I'm almost I I I actually, let me, let me rephrase it. I I really don't wanna continue this tonight again. If the applicant hasn't bothered to be here, so I wanna finish off our thoughts tonight, so. Um, with that being said, I'll take some input from uh the public so that we can um maybe, that can maybe help formulate our thoughts. So Mister Mister Nardi, now it's a, now it's a good time. Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, you need, yeah, there you go, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was just simply gonna comment on the signage.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
It 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 appears to me that the signs that are on the building, which I think are two large red signs, seem reasonably significant in size. I just don't see why the zoning board would want to set a precedent of allowing a third sign. I just, I just don't see how it's necessary up there. There's, there's a lot of signage in the, in this part of the re- retail sector. I think most retail shops do have two signs. Um, not all of them do, but I think most of them do. But I just don't see the need for a third sign, and I just don't see why the the board would wanna set a precedent in this manner. I just don't know how you could ever deny somebody else coming to seek a third sign.
Yep.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, thanks for this comment, um, appreciate that. Um, anybody else in the public wishing wishing to speak? Not seeing anybody else closing the public comment section of this hearing, um, board members discussion. Um. Robbie, actually, I'm go ahead, go ahead.
I don't see any reason we would grant this. It doesn't seem like it would be aesthetically pleasing. It's outside of what the the code says.
Um. Yeah, you know, I I don't don't disagree with that, uh, that statement. And it's it's a variance, and I don't think any of the uh the reasoning uh for the variance, uh. Or for allow or for issuing a variance are a a match. So, um. Tom, Ravi, wanna chime in?
I agree with that. I don't think there's a basis for a variance here.
Yeah, I don't see any practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. And, you know, this is a case which doesn't seem to have been contemplated by this bylaw. You know, the only unique thing here is this, I think on the, on the corner, so it's got two exposures, but I I I can't imagine the bylaw didn't contemplate that somebody would be on the corner, so.
Right, 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 right.
See how we get there.
And 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 what was point, and what was pointed out uh by the, by Messina Nadi, it's like there's two significant signs already. It's not like, not like anybody's gonna miss this, uh, you know, it's like you know, if there weren't any other signs, or if, yeah, if if this was really helping with some wayfinding, then uh, then 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 I could see an argument, but not now. Um, misuse.
Um, so just given the direction, it sounds like the board is going um for not granting the sign variance. Um. I, it is not. Um, I would ask that uh at least, you know, one board member review the decision. Not necessarily having to bring it, you know, back to um the full board at the next meeting to review. Um, I don't think it's the same level of variance request as the school, but just to at least have one member review, it would be appreciated.
Yeah. Tom, do I hear a volunteer?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it, except uh since I'm not a voting member, is that appropriate?
Um, I I I would think so, and 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 if if I may add, and I think that's still okay, um. Since uh other Elizabeth was also looking for some help and some clarifications uh earlier in the in the conversation here. Um, early on this evening, maybe maybe the two of you uh look at it so that there is, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Here it's pretty, here it's pretty simple, because if you deny the variance, you don't have to give many reasons.
You know what? I'm sitting right here with my Tom Swaim memo that is highlighted and and marked and all that, and uh that's what I came away with, that we don't have to write anything if we deny a variance.
Um, you.
But still, still, it needs, it needs to be good. So, anyway, uh, let's, um.
So we we would write something anyways as a matter of course, just for promise.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Um, so can I have a motion, please?
I've moved to that, I make a motion, am I doing this right? I make a motion to deny the target painting and contracting request for a sign variance under sign bylaws, section three C two and eight B to allow a third hanging sign at eighty-nine Thero.
My second.
Um, all this in favor, Miss Violet Leonard.
Aye.
Miss Fia.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, uh, so that the application has been denied. So those were the agenda items, um. Let me, let me, uh, we have two administrative items on the agenda, and let me uh just for ease, uh, at least for me, ease, swap these around, start off with the meeting minutes. I read the meeting minutes, there's uh five sets of them. I read the meeting minutes and I had no comments on them. So, job well done, at least from my part, um. Board members, any edits?
Have no comments.
No, those.
I read them and no comments.
Wonderful, wonderful, um, motion, please.
Oh, you know, I I gave a couple of typos, I think, to Kim, which were fixed, but it's nothing substantive, so. Um, I don't think that affects anyone else's review.
It does not affect my.
Uh, punctuation is important, right? Let's eat landmark.
Yeah. Uh, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for October twelfth, October twenty-sixth, November ninth, November thirtieth, and February eighth.
I second that.
Um, everybody in favor, Miss Fia.
Aye.
Mister Violet Leonard.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Um, election of officers, so Thomas Swain, uh, non-voting member can't be an officer, so. Um. We need to elect uh officers for the next year being chair, vice chair, and secretary. So.
We we call it a clerk.
A clerk, clerk, sorry, sorry. It was, yeah, I was sec- I was secretary at that. No, I thought it was secretary.
You were clerk?
Was I clerk?
Yeah.
Because I I was, you know, my other board that I'm on, and I was secretary, whatever it is. Um, anyway. Do we have any uh motions? We talked about last year. Uh, we mentioned that we would be rotating uh the chair. Vice chair would become chair, the chair would become clerk or secretary, and then go go around. So we can do that, um. I know I became, that means that, Ravi, you would be ending up as.
Yeah, you know, I'll be honest, I don't you know, I I I can do what needs to be done to participate on the board, but I'm not sure I have the bandwidth. Uh, cause I think there's a little additional work involved this chair. Uh, I'm not sure I have the bandwidth for that.
Okay, okay, I'm happy to do it, and we still have a forty B on our plate, so, you know, which I I actually really enjoy, um, so, but heads up, though this is my last year on the on the board as well, then I I will be terming out as well. Um, although I might have a uh a associate term left, but, uh. We'll cross that bridge later, um, but so otherwise I'll be terming out, so I'm 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 very happy to uh to continue another year as as chair, so. Um, and you'll, you'll stay uh vice chair, uh, Ravi, uh, which means that you'll be chair if I'm not uh if I'm not around.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
And then. And then uh Elizabeth will be clerk.
And.
Cool.
What does that entail?
Um. We've um so.
You 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 your salary will be doubled.
Oh, thank God, what a good day.
Um usually the the clerk is the one um that takes a little bit more focus on um. Looking at the draft minutes.
Great, noted, I'm all over.
So um before the clerk actually had to sign the minutes, and that's no longer a requirement. Um so I would ask if somebody would uh nominate the slate of officers as CEO as chair. Um Robbie as vice chair, and then Elizabeth as clerk, and have somebody second that. Um nomination slate and then have Theo take a vote.
I nominate that's.
I second that.
Second, and uh all those in favor, and it's Tom doesn't even get to vote on this.
About that.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking like you may be uh elected to uh to nominate here, but. Uh all in favor, Miss Violet Leonard, Miss Fia.
Alright.
Uh chair votes I as well. Thank you uh so much. For this, um not quite done yet, we're almost done. Um so next week we have the meeting on Forest Ridge. Um. And um. We did, there was something else I wanna come back to. Um you mentioned that, you know, we were supposed to be in the townhouse. Um and we've broadcasted that a few times, and then now we make it all virtual. I'm a little bit afraid that there's butters or other people coming to the townhouse. Um so if it it and it, you know, I am totally willing to go. And do the Zoom call from the townhouse by myself if I can get in. So Elizabeth, you too.
You know what? I would be at the townhouse with you. I'll, um there's a um an event in Concord that I'd like to be at, so. Townhouse would have me closer, so I'm happy to be there too.
Um so just um just so you know, we would, um you know, if if you do want to change it virtually. Um it would be broadcast. Um on news and notices, um we do have a number of emails for um the butters. And um they would also be informed. Um so I I I don't think getting the word out would be um that much of an issue.
Okay, 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 that that my my worry was, you know, that. People were gonna be pulling a Robbie and showing up at the townhouse. Uh so. Um that's if 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 you can broadcast it to to the neighbors and 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 the stakeholders, you know, the. You know, Keith Bergman, et cetera, although I'll see him most likely before then anyways, but. Uh but yeah, as if we can, if we can make that, then then we'll just do it from here. Um. The reason why at first it was like, well, we just need three members to continue it, but I I would actually like it. Uh would appreciate if all members are gonna be there. It's gonna be very brief, but I I do wanna update. Uh the board on on why we need to continue it. Uh what the applicant has been doing up up until now. And and then why we need to continue, and so that it is not just, you know. Uh sort of a blind, okay, they ask what we give to them. We so we, you know, I I now understand what they're doing. And I think it's it's pretty important stuff. Um so we would like. I would like to update the board on that, and then at the same time, also update the um. Uh the neighbors and 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 the stakeholders, so that they are not in the dark and they know what's what's going on. So I I think that's very important. Uh that we do that. So um that's 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 where we stand, and uh Robbie, I um. I I actually think it's a really good thing uh that that you're uh that you don't have to ru run a meeting. Um because I I noticed that when um Elizabeth Akhurst Moore didn't wasn't chair anymore. She all of a sudden could dig deeper into the legal stuff. And and you know, if you, you know, eve- even as you talk about bandwidth in a meeting like tonight, you know. Half of my bandwidth at least is occupied by trying to get everything, you know, and I I can't focus, so having you focus. Sort of fully on the legal, the legalese of every application, I think is is. Really beneficial for the board, so um I I think it's actually a really good thing for the board that you are just. Ended using your legal mind and nothing, nothing else, so. It's a good thing, so. Um. I'm gonna have a drink. Um. Right, is there anybody else uh who wants to still speak? Because I've been talking all along. Okay, thank you so much. Uh Elizabeth, you you didn't see the underside of the bus too much tonight. Uh so um that was that was a good thing. Right, so um and 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 Robbie, you 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 understand why we needed, why we needed to. Why we needed to get town council involved, right? We we.
I'm I'm gonna have you adjourn the meeting.
Hmm?
I'm gonna have you adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the meeting is now adjourned.